Huntsville, Alabama, yesterday and met somebody that knew you.
Awesome.
All right, good afternoon. It is 5:00 PM, Tuesday, June 10th. City Council Planning Commission Workshop Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Nicole, would you mind doing roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Han?
Here.
Councilmember Streeman?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Myers. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Bogosian?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item, citizens' comments?
Uh, no.
None today? Thank you. Move on to special presentations. First is an update on beach projects. Mr. Trainum, thank you for joining us as always.
Hello. It's good to be here. Take this. Just sit. Okay. It'll work out better so I don't have to talk to the back. All right, I'll give Amy a second to get the presentation up, but anyway, I'll try to keep this pretty short, but happy as always to answer any questions you have. Just Doug asked me to come kind of give a quick update on the recent projects that have been completed and what's going on in the beach management world. To start with, the, we had two projects completed last month. The one at the south end was our dune restoration project. Here are the slides, ours, we'll go in order. The dune restoration project that was being done in connection with the Core's beneficial use project. Then we also had the shoal management project, at least the first phase of it. We are working on permitting for the next large-scale nourishment and also doing our annual monitoring services. So, the shoal project, again, recently completed towards the end of May. That work totaled 117,000 cubic yards of sand that were moved from the oncoming shoal. About 80,000 yards of that material went to the area generally referred to as Beechwood. That sand went as far south or west as Seagrove Villas and close to the Grand Pavilion and then almost to Dune Crest Lane, so it was a little bit bigger than just Beechwood. About 40,000 yards went to the Ocean Club, Seascape, and Port of Call area. We were hoping to move about 150,000 yards of sand. When we got the bids in, the project did have to get scaled down a little bit. We also were running into some tide conditions that made the shoal less accessible and honestly, just a lot of people using the beach as we got into May, which slowed down production. I will credit the contractor, S.J. Hamel Construction. They were willing to kind of reduce their production by slowing down their trucks substantially to keep everybody safe and keep the beach open. So that extended the time it took to move that material because they were usually moving about seven miles an hour with, they normally would move about 25 miles an hour on the beach, so.
So Steve, can we ask questions as you're going through?
Sure, absolutely.
So back on this one, the, this is a completed picture, basically?
Uh, this is the before picture.
This is the before.
Yes.
Do you have an after?
I do, yes. So I'll go through a couple. This is what it looked like at the beginning of construction when we were first placing material in the most eroded areas. They were also doing some work on the sandbags to try to restore those into a appropriate configuration. This is what it looked like harvesting material off of the shoal at low tide. They had two excavators generally working and up to five off-road trucks. As much as they could, they tried to remove the material from the low-tide shoal as they got further into the project. Because we were removing materials, some of that material was no longer available and also we had some higher low tides, meaning they couldn't get out to the areas that they had been able to get to for really the last two weeks of the project. They were having, it was just an abnormally high set of low tides, so they were removing the material from the attached part of the shoal adjacent to the beach. So here are some completed pictures of the project. Down at the Ocean Club area, we did kind of front-load the area around Seascape and a little north, or south, excuse me, in anticipation of sand moving to the north over the next several months. So rather than focusing all the sand right in front of the building where it would pretty quickly immediately start moving to the north, you know, where the golf course is, we tried to kind of put it at the head of the stream so that through the next several months, that material will remain in place in front of the Ocean Club building or at least supporting the beach around it. But that's the area right now that's going to be the most, the thinnest beach and kind of the most vulnerable.
Is that low tide there?
That is a low tide photo, yes.
Is there, are there still sandbags all around the structure?
Correct. No sandbags have been removed. The state was, we worked with the state on this project with the work that was done. They're considering this to be Phase One of our, we're allowed to, two shoal management efforts under our permit. We are essentially paused on the first one right now with turtle season and the tourist season so that in the fall, if we decide the conditions warrant it and, you know, all factors considered that we want to move additional sand, we can come back in the fall after turtle season and move additional sand under our first deployment. So that's an option that the city has and we can evaluate those conditions, you know, closer to the time.
I mean, I know you can't prognosticate, but we were talking about the impact of that reduction of the sand volume in order, I mean, the whole idea was to get this to the big beach renourishment. Are you going to talk about that on the big beach renourishment or are we at, you know, higher risk here, should we be planning for any interim steps in the event that we run into some issues down the road here? I'm just trying to get, get ahead of it.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a good likelihood that there could be some benefit to moving some additional sand in the fall. I'll get into some of these other photos. There is an incredible amount of sand that's attaching to the beach and there are a lot of positive areas that we're seeing natural accretion and plus where the project sand has, has occurred. So to point a couple of those out, this is looking at the Dune Crest Beechwood area in the foreground. The area at the bottom of the screen is recovering and gaining sand as we speak. Out there today was even wider than this photo. The area, the focus erosion area is right at the western end of Beechwood. There's two or three properties and then the rock revetment, they really have been the focus of erosion because there's a gap in this offshore shoal that I'll show you in a second. And that's still going to continue to be the hotspot until this gap closes, but we'll move down. As you go south from that rock revetment at Seagrove, the beach is actually recovering very well there, too. It's grown since the, the volume that we placed in the project. It's getting wider there still, too, and largely that's because of the, the sandbars that you see and the breaking waves out there, that material is coming on shore. So the Grand Pavilion area looks very stable. The area north that had been eroding over the past few months is, is kind of recovering and looking pretty good. If there are, the potential problem areas over the next six months are going to be the small area at the foreground of this photo, you know, a handful of properties and really only two or three that aren't protected by a rock revetment. And they still have their sandbags in place as well. As of today, there's about 60 feet of dry sand berm in the most eroded condition. The beach access, seaward of those rocks, is much improved from where it was a couple of months ago where it, even at mid, low tide, you couldn't walk around, at mid-tide, you couldn't walk around. Now, except for the very high tide, you can walk from, from one end of the beach to the So this is looking at the gap in the shoal that, again, is, has been responsible for that hotspot. The, the sandbar to the top of that red arrow is moving to both inland towards the beach and to the south, which is pinching this, this gap more and more every day. And the smaller that gap gets, the better it's going to be for the beach. Eventually, that gap will close or the sandbag, or the sandbar will attach to the beach and that sand will start accumulating on the dry sand beach. That's a very favorable condition. We've just got to get that gap to close, you know, and the sooner the better. I would anticipate over the next six months, it's likely to be either closed or getting very close to the beach and attaching, you know, one or the other. The area, this photo on the bottom right was taken about a week and a half after the project was complete. You can see that the shoal is still very present, still attaching to the beach. And as mentioned in other presentations, there's at least 600,000 yards of sand in this shoal that's attaching to the beach. It's likely a little bit more than that. A couple of drawn photos or vertical photos to show where the shoal's moving and where it's kind of stalling out. The photo here is from November 24. The red line shows what it's going to look like in April of the next year, so about five months or so later. And then I'll show another photo here in a second, but you can see where the landward edge is. And note that the tide is different in each of these photos, so just because the sand is exposed doesn't necessarily mean that it's, it's changed. You've got to account for the water level. So I'll flip back and forth a little bit. So from November 24 to April 25, what you'll notice is kind of at the eastern side of that red line, the shoal's kind of stalling out, not really moving a lot landward. At the western end is where we're seeing a lot more migration. We're seeing about 200 feet over that five-month period. And we're also seeing that sand go a little further to the west, which is a positive sign.
Right, you're going from north-south to east-west, so west is landward?
West would, or south would be down coast, kind of down the beach, yeah. Landward would be towards the beach, which is also kind of northwest, but it's moving both toward, that southern, southwestern portion of the shoal is moving both towards the beach and to the west at the same time. Also, the very northern portion of the shoal is attaching to the beach and also spreading a little further to the north. So two months later, this was early April, this is late May, we had another about 150 feet of landward movement of that western arm and additional movement to the west. Again, all that's positive, but there will still be that gap that's the hotspot. We're seeing a very little bit of landward movement of that, the bar and, yeah, that's not going to show up on the screen, but the right side of that red line is not moving a whole lot. And the reason that is, is there's so much sand offshore of there that is essentially creating its own barrier island. All the wave energy is breaking much further offshore, so it's not reaching that portion of the shoal and moving it landward. So we're going to expect to see that stall kind of continue for a little while, and you may actually see a much higher ridge that can essentially form a cat-eye pond. And that's happened before, but we're likely to see kind of a dry sand beach form on the seaward side of that ponded area. And that could be there for, you know, several months to even a year or two. We've seen that historically, like in 1949, there was a big one on eastern part of the island. If you look at Sullivan's Island right now, they have a cat-eye pond from the exact same process that attached to their beach last year. People are kite surfing in it and having a good time. But that's likely to form in that area, at least at some level. But eventually, it will migrate inshore and restore that dry sand area. These are just oblique areas at the same time. You can see the, the vast amount of shoal that was exposed at this tide. So again, just an incredible amount of sand is nearing the beach and attaching and moving closer and closer every day.
And that is not our, a sand that we put in place there?
No, this is all natural sand coming from the inlet delta. Again, this is over 600,000 yards. And as I mentioned, the, the wave energy breaking much further seaward is preventing that sand on the landward part of the shoal from moving quicker, so it's kind of getting taller and stalling out a little bit, but you see all those breakers. There's actually another shoal on the tail end of this one that's pointed to with the red arrow. So overall, again, the, the hotspot would be that area, the west end of Beechwood, and then the Ocean Club area, which will start to accrete as this sand is attaching, is starting to spread to the north, and I would anticipate we'll start to see some accretion close to the shoal and then over maybe the next 12 months, that should start to work its way far enough north to the Ocean Club type area. So we may have some period over the next six to 12 months where we have additional erosion. It was very stable before the project. We've seen a little bit of erosion since then, and that's one of the reasons we didn't put as much sand there because it wasn't eroding near as fast as the Beechwood area was. But those are our two vulnerable areas. Once we get all this sand moved onshore, I don't want to tell you that we're out of the woods and have a healthy beach for the next five years, but it may buy us some time before, you know, certainly any critical erosion is observed. Again, we can't predict exactly how much is going north, how much is going south, and the exact timing of, of all this, but overall, it's a very positive.
And Stephen, the shoal that's moving to where you have the gap right now, I mean, best guess is a six-month timeframe for attachment or who knows?
I think six to 12 after, I mean, hopefully, a little closer to the six. Again, summertime's a little calmer, so we may not have as much wave energy pushing it in, but based off the rates that we've observed over the past two months, that's reasonable. Here, kind of speak to a lot of the things I just said, so I won't rehash it. So the Core work, we also, the Core is continuing to slowly place sand along the south end of the island. To date, all of their work has been south of Third Avenue. We have requested them to move their discharge further north, up to the area around Fifth Avenue, to try to get sand further away from the inlet where it can benefit the dry sand beach more, kind of get, again, at the head of the stream as sand moves south. They've told, they've told us that they're working with their construction crews to, to implement that, but we're, we're pushing that to, to happen and I'm waiting on a callback to ensure that that gets there because I think it would be much more favorable for the city to have that sand placed further north.
Quick question on that, Steve. And one of the reasons, thank you for coming tonight, we were having our committee meeting and there were, we had just a lot of questions, but we couldn't answer them. One of the things that came up was, is it true, and I think Douglas, you were explaining this, that they've got some, basically, they've got sand grids over on their spoils area and they're having to, they're kind of assigned them to a reach and that they're, the reason they've stalled out kind of where they are for a couple of months now is that they can't, haven't got the sand up or whatever. Is that, is that how they're patching sand here that reaches over here? And we're kind of at the mercy of, they've got to get one done before they move on to the other?
Yes, so the, the area they're working out of now is called their, their Area 1028. It's one of the islands that they're digging and that, it was a very generic fill template that said, "That spoil island, disposal area, beneficial use area, that material had to be placed between Second Avenue and somewhere between Fifth and Sixth Avenue." But that was really the only guideline. It wasn't, you know, 100-foot section by 100-foot section, how much. It was just a very broad, place all that material within this box. So far, they've placed, we've been told that's, over half of that material has been placed, but so far, all of it has been placed between Second and Third Avenue. So just on a very generic kind of level, you know, trying to distribute it fairly evenly, they need to be moving it further north.
Is any sand going to be deposited on the 100 block at all?
No, their, their first placement area was, or their most southern point was Second So we did a dune restoration project that moved 35,000 yards of the material that the Core has placed into a new dune between Breach Inlet and 10th Avenue. That dune has held up pretty well. We've had a couple of big tides that have impacted a little bit, but other than a very small escarpment in some areas, it's holding up very well. We do recommend that the city evaluate it over the next few months to make sure it's going to be stable, but if it is, then plant it in the fall during the next kind of season for planting dune vegetation. I think there's been money in the budget kind of set aside for that already.
And sand fencing, too, Stephen, or just plantings at this point?
I think plantings are the, the critical component at first. In an area like that, if, if we end up building a pretty wide dry sand beach with this core sand, then sand fencing can be very advantageous. If it's more of a smaller width, you don't have that kind of source to feed it. Areas where you want to control the crowd at beach accesses to kind of get them out on the beach and not in the dune, it could be very effective there, too.
Go ahead, John.
I was just going to, of the 150,000 cubic yards that they've placed so far, how stable has that sand been? I mean, if you look in the Breach Inlet, that sandbar is growing pretty, pretty wide. Is part of that reason that it's grown is because that sand's moving there?
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to say because we don't have comparative surveys. They're not doing regular surveys of that material to quantify how quickly, how much is staying on the beach, how much is moving south, and how much of that is moving out to the, the sandbar. That's one of the reasons we would like to get them further north is to get away from that inlet where it would be a little bit easier to track what they're placing, letting it get up into the beach before it gets into that inlet system. There has been a decent amount of fine material. I'm assuming that, you know, 20% maybe of the material they're placing is pretty quickly kind of washing and being dispersed. That may be a little high, but.
You can almost walk across now.
Yeah, but the, the sandbar, Breach Inlet is going through the, it's in the initial stages of doing another evulsion event where it's going, it's extended beyond Sullivan's Island. Certainly, that's more sand than the Core's placed. I would strongly suggest that it's, you know, mostly natural processes that are building that spit like it's done historically. And at some point, it's going to cut through that delta, you know, your main channel will relocate, and then Sullivan's will have another shoal bypass like you're having at tree stand.
Yeah, this might be more of a question for Douglas, I'm not sure, but I was talking to a resident in the 400 block of Ocean over the weekend, and they had bought some vegetation or at least contracted to have some natural beach vegetation brought in for the dunes that they have already, and I'm not sure if that's, if the USACE has made that much of a difference in the 400 block yet, but he was talking about how established things had gotten fairly recently and he felt confident that he could put natural vegetation in and hold.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't disagree with that. We are seeing some benefits of that Core material, even if they're placing it at the 300, the 300 blocker, Beach Access 3, some of that material is dispersing to the north and you can see, and you can see mudballs from the material moving up to like Fifth or maybe Sixth Avenue, so they are getting the benefit. It's just not, I'd love to see it further north and kind of jump-start it a little quicker.
All right, to that end, this is really just for the public that's listening to all this. A lot of people don't realize you can get permits to put sand fencing in. So if you, if you can put vegetation in, you may want to either contact the city or contact OCR directly, but it's very easy to get a permit to do sand fencing. Personally, I've had a problem sourcing sand fencing. I don't know if you've got a source for sand fencing?
Yeah, so you can't get a permit. It's a general permit through the state, and I would strongly advise everybody that if you're considering it, go through the permitting process and do it according to the regulations or else the state will come out, tell you you're out of compliance and require you to remove it. I don't have a particular source. There are contractors we work with that source that material.
The local big boxes don't do sand fencing.
No.
It might be, Douglas, if you've got somebody to figure out a source for, for residents to buy sand fencing, that'd be great. Thank you. They call it snow fencing.
All right.
Stephen, what was that picture? Sorry.
Oh, um, yeah, this, this picture was, again, from late May down at the south end. So this is the Core's discharge pipe where it is currently ending at Third Avenue. They're not pumping in this photo, so they have their excavator that moves the pipe back and forth. And one of the things that we've realized with them is they, they say they move it to Third, but then they'll, as they're pumping, they'll pull it back with the excavator, you know, halfway back down to Second, so they kind of keep working in the same area. So again, we're trying to get them to shift up the beach a little bit more there.
Regarding breach, one of the questions that came up at our committee meeting, too, was, I asked, I think, Douglas, we were talking about a planned dredge in Breach Inlet, and I didn't know if that was, is that bridge to seaward dredge or is it bridge to Hamlin Creek and when that might be scheduled and who's, that's kind of the first I'd heard. I didn't know.
Yeah, that's the intercoastal, so that is, that is the kind of second half to the Band-Aid that they did to the intercoastal dredging. Before they went to the spoil sites for the Ala Palms, they did a little bit of dredging in the intercoastal waterway placed.
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty thousand. That was a, that's the one that's already been done.
So that's been done, they're going to go back and, and kind of do the permanent fix there at the end, they said at the beginning of their fiscal year, which I think is September?
But that's in the intercoastal. That's, that's, that's not, that's not the inlet itself.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, from the intercoastal to our.
And that's next year sometime, possibly.
Possibly as early as this fall or winter.
Right. And, and then they mentioned an additional kind of ongoing dredging operation for that same intercoastal sand to kind of have it on a, on a 18-month cadence to bring it to the beaches.
So there are no plans to dredge Breach Inlet?
No.
Or do any work there?
I know there has been some discussions with the marina, just in one of the bridge and that shoal that's in there, you know, maybe potentially dredging that in the future as well, but I don't think it's very far along yet. And I think it's somewhere around 300,000 yards they're estimating out of the intercoastal that they could potentially bring over to Ala Palms, which.
On the next dredge.
On the, the full kind of scope, which will be, you know, a great, you know, huge project. And that one will go a lot faster than what they're doing now. For large-scale nourishment, we are getting pretty close to having all the, the kind of science background done for that permit. Most of that effort has been on the offshore borings, working on the geotech, trying to find a suitable bar area. The biological assessment is pretty much complete, other than putting that bar area information into it. We're continuing to coordinate with SHPO. They're still wanting us to avoid the historic, the proposed historic district, which is a four-square-mile area offshore that does contain some very good sand. So we want to make sure that the city, whether it's this project or a future project, you know, maintains an ability to use some of that material. Once we kind of have the full permit package ready to go, we'll submit it to the city kind of for review. Be happy to speak with the beach committee to go through, you know, what those, the scope of that is and make any adjustments that we would need to make, and hopefully, we can have that submitted by the end of July.
Stephen, is this like others, does it have a public comment period as well?
Yes, there will be a public comment period. That's a 30-day period for anybody to be able to comment. Again, with any of these permits, that public comment period is kind of a soft number and if anybody ever comments on it, the state especially usually considers those comments. This will just highlight some of the geotechnical work. All these different shapes represent previous bar areas from earlier projects, proposed bar areas that we know contain good material, the proposed historic district and that large kind of transparent box. And all of the dots are borings that have been taken that we're trying to identify beach compatible sand, and there are some areas that are, are pretty good, there's some areas that are terrible, and unfortunately, every once in a while, you find a good area with one terrible spot in the middle of it, and that makes things really hard. So we're, we're trying to find as much area as we can to provide as much flexibility to a dredger as possible while maintaining the sediment quality.
Does your color coding of dots mean anything?
Different deployments of.
Not good or bad.
Not, not good or bad, yes. So right now, the area that we're focusing on for this project is that pink area right in the center of the island. The area that's in purple to the east is the, the main area we used for the prior project. The orange area was the areas that we used for the 2008 project. And the green areas are the ones that have really good sand but are in the historic district.
Frank, I'm going to reel you back for just a quick, I have one more follow-up question on the, on the Army Corps project. We were 150K in on the project and we're going to 550, 600K cubic yards. Timeline, are we looking at next, going into next, just for expectation for people on the beach and the rentals and all that?
Yeah.
Are we looking into next year now to have this?
As a third party to that project, I would say yes. You're probably looking at, you know, into next year for that to be completed based off the rate that they're working. Fortunately, it's a very limited operation. You know, they're only closing a very small section of the intertidal beach. People are able to move from side to side, walking on the landward end of their fill area. It's not very noisy at all, but it's certainly an inconvenience and they're taking up a lot of the parking of the, the Breach Inlet area.
But potential of another 300,000 cubic yards if they dredge the intercoastal this fall?
Yeah, I'm not sure how the Core's going to contract that. If they may negotiate a contract with this contractor because they're here or if they're going to put it out for an open bid.
Got you.
I'm not sure.
So it may have two pipes essentially come into that end at some point?
It's feasible, yes. And then we're doing the monitoring, again, we, our next scheduled monitoring is around July. We're increasing the amount of kind of the sub-compartments that we're looking at in the east end to try to better identify the areas that are problems and areas that are gaining. We are seeing this bottom left plot, if you look at the red line and the black line and the lack of a line before that shows the growth of the shoal and the landward migration. From September to February, we saw about 400 feet of landward migration of that shoal around Dune Crest. So again, it's getting higher, it will stall out a little bit, but it's only, you know, at that point, it was about 600 feet from the beach, so, you know, within the next 12 months, we're hoping. 600 feet from the beach. So, you know, within the next 12 months, we're hoping that that's going to be attached. I believe that's my last slide. Yeah.
Are we still looking at the roughly 1.8 million cubic yards with the 1.2 north and, or up, and then the other five or 600,000 south of a big project?
I think that's what we would want to permit. Again, you can permit the very high-end worst-case scenario, and then we would look at the monitoring data and the shoals, you know, at closer to the time of construction to build a budget, though. I think probably could get away with a little less based off the volume of the shoal that's on here, but.
Could you do me a favor?
His favorite skill, but.
Yeah, I've been kind of talking about the, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the cost metrics based on where we are versus some of the other projects. And I know there are a thousand variables. Can I just request formally that you'd kind of take a look at, now that we're getting close to the permit submission, it'd be great to know all the soft costs that go along with it, the permitting, the consulting, the cost per cubic yard, your estimate on mobilization, use the 1.76 that we've, you know, looked at, and if you wouldn't mind trying to refresh that, and let's kind of see, you know, whether we are closer or not, or if we've got to do anything, because we've got to figure out the funding side of this.
Stephen, I think too, I mean, those assumptions, all the worst-case scenarios, we have another potential 300,000 coming from the Army Corps that's not in there. So to your point, I'm hoping, you know, that may be a lesser number that we need on that end of the beach, but we need to factor that in.
Yes, and I've had some recent, I'm sorry, I've had some recent conversations with contractors that I don't want to say in a public setting just for their bidding purposes, but yeah, I do have some information that we can use to kind of update those estimates on.
Great. Yeah, and I, you know, I think it's great with the Army Corps, but they, you know, they have coined these as not nourishments for a reason. They're putting them out in a non-optimal place, and we're not getting the harvest that we would have, if we had the placement of where we can place it. And, you know, I just think we need to keep that in mind before we start shaving the volumes off both sides, because if we're looking at that eight-year cadence and that healthy beach profile, you know, what I, what I'd hate to do is get a year from now, and all of a sudden, we're shaven because we didn't plan, plan properly on one end of the beach or the other. And, you know, I don't know, we also had, I think, we got two second opinion, we got one and a second opinion that's already in house. I don't know what the status of the second one is, and I'm hoping you're looking at those two. It looked like there was a lot of consistency in the one that came in. The one thing that it did say, though, was about breach inlet and the, you know, the stoppage in there. And that's why I was asking about a breach inlet dredging, because I think even in one of your updates on your proposals, you had identified breach inlet as one of the major causes of erosion down there. It sounds like we keep kind of going over the, the breach inlet conversation. So, you know, what I, what I'd hate to do is keep pouring sand up at, on the end of the island, just to have it wash, wash out with either some other kind of strategy or dredging breach inlet.
Yeah. As I said, I'd be happy to maybe speak to the beach committee on that, as if the city's moving ahead on their own to kind of accomplish your goals. So I think that's the right approach.
I would just add, I would just say that I don't think anybody has advocated that I've heard dredging breach inlet. That, you know, they do talk consistently about that, that process in, in breach inlet being the cause of erosion, but the solution I don't think I've ever heard is to dredge it. I think I've heard that a terminal groin to stop it from going in and stopping this kind of whipping action is, is the solution, but not, not actually dredging ever the inlet itself.
Or some, we've not, okay, yeah, I'm no expert on this. So if, if we're not, if we have both identified, or you've identified and other opinions identified, breach inlet is a major cause, or the major cause of the erosion on that end of the island, yet we haven't done it. We're not pursuing any mitigation for that situation. You know, that's the root cause. It seems, people seem to be pretty aligned on that, at least one of the major causes of the erosion. If we're not mitigating that, then we're just going to be pouring money into the, if you know what I mean.
I think terminal groin is the kind of solution.
Yeah, terminal groin. So dredging the inlet, just for kind of, to be completely here, dredging the inlet would essentially mimic what nature's doing on its own every five to seven years or so when it breaches through that delta and makes new inlet channel. You'd essentially be doing the same thing, except you would have the ability to place material that you're dredging on, on a beach, but you would also have to consider the potential impacts of taking that sand that eventually would move to Sullivan's and moving it back to Isle of Palms. The, the terminal groin certainly could be effective, and we've seen in design projects for those groins on inlets that have a demonstrated historically high erosion rate. One of my, my concerns with, if we were to approach that project today here, you know, we've had about two years' worth of high erosion at, at breach inlet. Before that, it's historically been stable or accretional. So until you can demonstrate that this is a long-term problem, there, you could open yourself up for challenges over, you know, putting in a groin today. Now, if the core place is sand, it continues to erode, and two or three years later, we've said, okay, now we've had five years' worth of pretty chronic erosion at that end despite some of these mitigation efforts, then absolutely, I think you meet that criteria. But it's something I think we, we want to continue to look at. Hopefully, this core work is effective, at least in getting us back to a condition that's healthy, and then we can track it from there. But all those are very, you know, good arguments and good, kind of just planning steps to kind of keep considering and deciding what the best time or approach would be.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing. So this is a good, good update, current state, all this other discussion about breach inlet, possible dredging all the way. Shouldn't that go to, is that coming in through the second opinion, or going back to an ad hoc committee or what? I mean, we're not really discussing that tonight, or shouldn't be.
I think we are.
And I'm not addressing it to you, Stephen.
Yeah, I'm mainly going to go back to the committee.
Yeah. I mean, we're here tonight for an update. It's a good one.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Douglas, anything else?
Nope.
Breach-wise?
That's it.
Next item is Environmental Advisory Committee Initiatives. Laura, Laura Lovins, Chair of that committee. Either one.
Did you, I saw a display. You want, is it better there, or you want to? Either one.
I'll say it, and then Susan, can you help me? I'm going to click through some so that I don't, so I can keep on track.
Douglas, can you pull up the email that I sent you?
Oh, that will have the right one then.
Her display?
Yeah.
Do it here?
There. Never mind.
You go.
Okay. Well, I'm really glad I could be here tonight, because one of my goals coming in as Chair this year was to be able to meet on a quarterly basis and give you updates on the work and progress that we've been making, and I missed first quarter. So I'm here second quarter, and I'm glad to be here. So the vision of the Environmental Advisory Committee, just to recap, is to work towards making the Isle of Palms the coastal leader in environmental best practices. And our mission is to advise city council on matters of environmental impact, protections, conservation, and sustainability by exploring best practices and data. And we have four focus areas, four pillars, I would call them. We look at reduction of litter waste and pollution, protection of wildlife and habitat, advocacy, leadership in climate action, and the maintenance of water quality. So we're adding a new, it's not really a new form, but a, another category under pollution. We're looking at light pollution. We've done some tracking, and IOP is experiencing light pollution increases of 4% per year since 2013. So it's 4%, 4% more and onward. And why is this happening? Well, we have existing homes that are being updated and expanded. We have smaller homes that are being torn down, and larger homes being built. And in a lot of these cases, new lighting is being installed that is causing this increase. There are other low-country barrier islands that are adopting ordinances that minimize light spillage and skyglow across the island. We have ordinances on light emission, and we obviously are working towards the, you know, the lights out for turtles. But we are looking at possibly leveraging some of these additional light spillage and skyglow initiatives for best practices here on Isle of Palms, because we really want to protect more than just our sea turtles. We want to protect other areas of the island from exterior lighting, which would include critical marsh habitats and neighborhoods. So this is an ongoing project. It has been spearheaded by Matt Sims, and I'm trying to think, well, it, it's, it's being worked on.
And Todd?
Todd. Todd Murphy. Thank you. Litter and waste. We're continuing to partner with Smart Recycling. And last summer during the IOP farmers markets, we gave out close to 100 compost bins. I know Rusty picked up one. And we were able to partner with Smart Recycling. Megan McGill is our partner there, and she told us about the opportunity to add compost bin liner dispensers. And we were able to create that initiative. And so we have dispenser, dispensers at the Marina, and we have it at the Carmen Bunch Park next to where the recycling areas are. We also started looking at the island litter and waste program. We're working on a high-grade approach for litter removal. We have 55 beach access points. We have front beach commercial area, and there are also cans in the municipal parking lot. And the current contractors, contract is going to be coming up this September. The current containers do not allow for any kind of covering, which is problematic. We have waste that's being blown out onto the beach. We have birds and animals getting into the cans. And it's also a big project for the municipality to handle getting the cans off the beach during big storms or high king tides. So we're looking at corrals that would have rolling cans, and they would be street-side at most beach access paths. There's an error. It would not be behind the dune lines, but we would be looking at corrals on the front beach commercial area. And there would be signage about what you can and cannot put in the different receptacles, and IOP would be, the island would be prominently displayed on the signs on the sides of the corrals. I also wanted to mention that there was a funding support from Palmetto Pride. We got a grant, the city got a grant, to contract work crews to collect litter regularly from the public parking, beach, and Marina areas, and also along Palm Boulevard, in addition to the current work that's being done by the litter. Robert Acero confirmed that FVS has contracted the litter removal service, and they've completed the second week of litter cleanup on four miles of IOP. That was done on May 22. And then every other week, they'll be averaging 13 to 14 40-gallon bags of garbage. They've been totaling approximately 500 gallons of trash per run, which includes metal and debris. Their next visit was on June 2, so that will continue through the summer. I keep pushing that. Our native plant garden is in its second season, thanks to Charlene Johnson, Matt Sims, Mary Pringle. And we got our benches in in the fall. Those were donated from the Exchange Club. And we have 14 families of purple martins at the garden. Mary Pringle was out today, actually banding with the help of South Carolina Audubon. And it's really amazing that we, in even our first year, we had birds and nestlings there, and second year. Sometimes it can be years before they will actually take up residence in a purple martin gourd habitat. We have a new public dock, which was unveiled this spring. And the EAC is working with Susan Hill Smith on an installation of wildlife and nature interpretive signs to be placed around the dock, the walkways, and a few on the dock. And we brought a couple of very rough drafts. There's my, of the types of things that we would have, birds, new crabs, manatees, history about the area, the Native Americans who used to live here and be around and paddle around. So we're actually meeting, Susan and I are meeting with John Bushnell and Dave Lorenz from Islander 71, and Mike Schuler from the Marina. We're meeting with them on June 23 to ask if they would be willing to donate funds to offset the cost of this project, and in return, they could get their logos prominently displayed on, on the signs as supporters of the program. Cindy Mars, who's on our committee, is also on the Wild Dunes Board, and she's contacting Terry Hack to see if the resort would like to also come up and, and give us some money. We definitely have visitors from the resort that are going down there, and it would be a lovely way for them to enjoy our natural habitat. In May of this year, a resident of IOP came to the EAC to provide citizens' comments on her family's health issues related to environmental toxins, specifically unsafe levels of glyphosate, which is what is found in Roundup. Her children were having constant health issues, and they were found to have off-the-charts, quote-unquote, levels of glyphosate in their system. And so we've done some research and found that cities and municipalities across the United States have restricted or banned the use of glyphosate, which is the active ingredient Roundup. And this has been driven by health concerns and negative environmental impact. It kills not just your weeds, but it can kill your pets. It kills pollinators, and it's not good for the environment. Monsanto, the producer of the product, has multiple lawsuits pending against it because of these health issues. So we're working on language to ban the use of glyphosate on city-owned or managed properties in order to level, leverage best practices from 11 other states. We've already confirmed with Robert that the city does not currently use Roundup on anything more sparingly than weeds. They have tough areas in parking lots. And I contacted Green Carolina, which is the main landscape company for Wild Dunes. They also use that Roundup very sparingly. Their main herbicide is Speed Zone, which does not contain glyphosate. The problem we are running into right now is that glyphosate is used quite a bit on the golf courses in Wild Dunes. So we're, we're working right now just on city-owned or managed properties and not trying to extend it totally island-wide yet. We have a very large laundry list of climate action initiatives that came from the Community Enrichment Plan. So we will be working very hard on all of that coming up this year into next year, and probably even the year after that. Impacts of climate change, including cost analysis calculations, making recommendations on living shorelines, et cetera. So look for a lot more of that coming in the next, this year and onward. And our final pillar, maintenance of water quality. We have many neighborhoods, as you know, and areas of the islands that are regularly experiencing flooding, not during, not just during major storms, but now during sunny day rain events. Today was a perfect example. When we had our gully washer come through, the typical areas on Palm and on Waterway were experiencing flooding. And with approximately 1,170, 50, excuse me, septic systems and grinder, and 200 grinder pumps due to development and no ordinances, we are wanting to look more closely at the impacts that sea level rise and flooding may or may not be causing with our septic systems. In 2024, the EAC unanimously approved a proposal for monitoring water quality at drainage outfalls. And I'm happy to say that we were finally able in the fall to do the test. And three outfalls from the test came back with unhealthy levels of nitrates, total nitrogen, which can lead to algal blooms and atrophication. That's where the water, the oxygen in the water is totally gone, and fish and wildlife are killed. There was TKN, which is organic and ammonia nitrate, suggesting organic waste or sewage contamination. And there was also heavy sediment, oil and grease runoff. So from there, we know that we need to do additional testing. We've got a nice start, but this is something that's going to take a while. We want to make sure that we're providing accurate information to you as a council and to the community. So the next step is going to be moving forward with some pre-screening to find out what exact levels of this bacteria are in those three outfalls. And then that will determine if we want to move forward with additional testing broken out by DNA to determine different species, and beginning to pinpoint human versus animal. broken out by DNA to determine different species and beginning to pinpoint human versus animal.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I understand that bullet you said there. That you're saying that there were toxins at a level that basically killed wildlife?
The nitrate, yeah. The algal blooms and the atrophication, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. Now, that was one test. So I mean, just like anything, we need an X and a Y. We need a numerator and a denominator. So we need to continue to test. We pick these three that are, that were the highest levels and were the most problematic. And that's what we're going to go back to. And actually, with this pre-screen levels, we, the first water quality testing we did was during a rain event. For these next testings, they recommend that we do it during a dry event. So we will actually have a better opportunity because we had to wait for a big rain event to happen to actually make sure we could do the first level of testing. Moving forward, we'll be able to use dry weather, which luckily we have more of. But we want to pinpoint human versus animal and start to make the graph to see where we are in regards to animal versus human. And there's another test that can be added into the mix specifically to test for sucralose in bacteria. Humans are the only animal that consumes sucralose. If we find high levels of sucralose along with bacteria in these areas, we can start to say more definitively, we do have a human waste problem versus a dog or a gull or a deer problem.
Was this testing all done outside Wild Dunes or?
No, it was done.
Is it all across?
Yeah, it was across the island. I think we had a total of eight or nine outfalls. And three of them were, these three that were the most problematic are the ones that we want to go back to.
And what's the frequency of the testing?
The frequency, we would want to try and do the next testing within the next couple of months and then do a follow. We're going to do the pre-screening first to see if we even have, if these outfalls continue to have these high levels of bacteria. If they do, then the next level would be to look for the DNA testing. And we could go back then, a couple of months after that and do another. It costs money, so we're going to be looking at best recommendations to put forward to council for funds so that we can do it. It gets cheaper the more you do it because they've already got the basics as far as the metrics. And it's simply a matter of the labor and the actual test tubes and things like that that are needed. But it gets cheaper, but it's going to be.
Have you talked with Linda Tucker about the testing that they did a while about?
Was that the one 20, 20 years ago?
I don't think it was that far long ago, but maybe, but I'm thinking it was more like 15. And they found as far as the, the waste, it was like 90% animal, a little over.
That's why we want to do this DNA testing. If we find the high enough levels of bacteria, we want to break it out and start to break it out consistently. If we start getting, if we start getting more human than animal, dog, gull, deer.
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 Coyote.
Dog, gull, deer and bird are really the four main that are here on the island and would show up.
Were the three outfalls that were problematic inside the gate or outside the gate?
Outside the gates, outside the gates.
I seem to remember we also did some testing during COVID. You know, when we had the influx of visitors that were down here for quite a length of time, there was some, some testing that was done during that period.
That was just waste discharge from the plant.
Sewer plant.
Sewer plant. So that you're testing human sewage, definitely, to see if there's a presence of COVID in it.
Let's keep moving.
Yeah, we have to, so that's, that's next on our agenda. And finally, this, this was really exciting news. In 2024, Sandy Brotherton, who was the chair, really wanted to focus on water quality specific to finding ways to help the Water and Sewer Commission expand their sewer system. And so we met with Chris Jordan at the Water Commission in early spring of that year. And it became clear that major funds would need to be secured in order to expand the sewer plan. In 2018, the cost for that plan was around 38 million. And by 2024, it was almost doubled. It was around 70 million. So in June of '24, the EAC met with Ryan Phillips, who's the Water Resources Team Leader of Seamen Whiteside, to find out about federal level funds available for municipal water projects. He works at the federal level. And he was also part of the company that provided the sea level rise adaptation study. And so with the MOU, between the city, the Member of Understanding between the city and the Water Department, we coordinated a meeting with Chris Jordan and Doug Douglas Kerr in September to discuss the sewer master plan. And we forwarded the idea of setting up a meeting with Ryan Phillips to present ways that the city and Water Department could tap into federal funds for water infrastructure. And so that meeting was coordinated. And I'm happy to know that the council moved forward unanimously on voting for a federal lobbyist, Thorn Run Partners. So thank you very much for, for that. I'm happy that we were able to get that accomplished or at least bring that to you all to get accomplished. And I just want to thank my committee members. Todd is our vice chair. We have three new members, Eric Sikora. Where'd I go? Well, Eric Sikora, Sean Popson, Lucinda Cindy Mars. We're losing Matt to the town of Mount Pleasant, which we're sad to say. And Mary Pringle and Lucius Viata is still our student member. So we'll have more to share in fourth, third quarter and fourth quarter. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for the rest of the committee. Y'all do really good work.
And, and.
And work really hard. So y'all put in a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn it over to whoever's next.
Thank you. Next one, we've got most of the planning commission here with us tonight. And in your packet is a draft of the updated comprehensive plan. Not to be discussed in detail tonight by any stretch, but just to get some feedback from Planning Commission. Douglas, I know you've kind of led the effort too, along with Ron and others. So just let, Ron, you want to?
Come take the hot seat. While he's coming up, I'll just give an overview kind of of what the planning commission has been doing and what they're, what they're working towards trying to achieve and a little bit of the framework that we all in South Carolina operate under. The, every city in the state of South Carolina that wants to have a zoning code, wants to have land regulations and regulate development, has to have a comprehensive plan. That's a, that's a requirement of the state code. And these plans all have to follow generally the same framework. There are 10, there used to be eight required elements. There are now 10 required elements that we have to have. There is a cadence in which we have to review those plans and update them. So the city, the city's planning commission began in May of 2015. So it's, I'm sorry, the last comprehensive plan was adopted in May of 2015. Our planning commission began in June of 2020, reviewing that document. They very quickly identified the fact that there was a lot of, there was a lot of outdated components to that plan. So they knew that it would turn into a full update. So, so what they're forwarding to you is a complete update of the comprehensive plan. There, since the last time the city enacted a comprehensive plan, there has been the addition of a new element. The resiliency element is new to our plan. That was something that the state legislature enacted and required in 2020. So, so this plan has that new, that new element incorporated into it. The planning commission met a total of 32 times to review work and update this plan. So they put a lot of work in over the course of really, I would say the bulk of their work was between 2020 and 2023. It now has kind of been an editing and kind of a slow, slow progression mode here for the last couple of years. So Jan was, you know, showing examples of things that have happened in the last couple of years that are, that are, that are not included in this plan. So what the request is of council at this point is to take the draft that's in your packet, read it. And I think the planning commission would very much like to get your comments and feedback on that plan. It can be either done, you know, written comments through me. It could be done in a future workshop like this where they hear that input. Kind of any, any, any way that we would like to, you know, you all would like to give the feedback would be, would be fine by the planning commission. Once that feedback is received, they would, they would go back to the drafting table a bit more, work on it, get it in a final format and then bring that back to you all. They formally have to make a recommendation, which they haven't done. They haven't gotten it to that format yet. But the, the enabling legislation requires that they make a recommendation to you all that you all publicize a public hearing with 30 days' notice. And then you go through a process of two readings of that along with a public hearing. So that's kind of in a nutshell as to, as to where we are today and kind of what we're thinking, our next steps. As the mayor mentioned, we can get as granular in this meeting as you all would like, but we thought it would probably be most appropriate at this time to just kind of hand it to you with the full disclaimer that, that I think we know that there are dates. And that's part of a challenge of this, you know, document. And every time they look at it, you know, there's, there's something that's happened in the last year. And there's kind of the sense that, well, we should add that in. Or there's a reference to something that's, you know, at this point, five years old, seems dated. So we take that out. So that's been, that's been a challenge. There's also been the challenge of so many of the things that the city works on hits on, on multiples of these 10 required elements. So, you know, where do you put an initiative like what Laura was talking about with searing the island? Is that a natural resource issue? Is that a community facilities issue? So, you know, there are challenges in drafting the ordinance and where it could, at one point, those issues were kind of threaded throughout all of the elements. But here recently, they've tried to kind of silo the different initiatives into one of those, one of those 10 elements. So with that, I know that, again, the planning commission has put a tremendous amount of work. I think, Scott, I think, I think they were working on this back when you were on the planning commission.
Yes.
So you're even part of the, part of the effort.
Yeah.
It's been, again, kind of many years of work. And, you know, there's a realization that there's, there's more work to do and some fine tuning to do. But generally wanted to just give it to you and get feedback and ask for your input going into the future.
Ron, anything to?
Well, no, I mean, how you perceive the comp plan is to each their own. You know, it's the underlying document by which we create ordinances and rules and how we behave as a community. And it's written from kind of a vague standpoint at first. Then it gets into some highly technical statistical things. And we, we found a census in 2020 that, of course, you didn't get it in 2020, but we, we knew it was coming and we held off and updated population information. With transportation, we had all that fun stuff that got happy y'all elected here that we needed to address and talk about and discuss. And all that's now kind of in the plan. But because there's a lot of that technical information and this commission in particular has been a little bit more focused on some of those kind of more technical details and number numerology. In the past, we've had commission members who were lawyers and everything got eaten up by the grammar and, and that kind of structure. And we don't have that this time. So we're able to concentrate on the stuff that really is more important, the feel of the document. You know, hopefully somebody moving into the community, either as a resident or as a business, might be able to read this document and understand who we are as a community. And that's, that's why we, we have these things and why we love to do them.
So when is Planning Commission's next meeting?
Tomorrow.
Well, okay, the next one.
Four weeks after that.
Okay. So, 7th of July. 10th-ish, 10th or so of July. Could we get feedback to Planning Commission in 30 days? Seems reasonable.
Are there any areas within the current plan document that you would prefer us to focus on for feedback? As I recall, the document, it was quite voluminous. And there were some real standout goals and objectives in certain areas. If you maybe could give us some feedback on where would you like or want any input from council? Or maybe I shouldn't ask that question.
Because we're also looking at that, our other project is that other bombshell you dropped on us a couple of months ago. And it all kind of relates. And that's part of the problem. Where do you start and stop? Where, how do you parse this and that? You know, certainly there's things like the introductions and histories. That's kind of fun, interesting stuff that you can gloss over. Not my glossor, unfortunately. So, you know, I could read that easily. But really, after even seeing statistics for what they are, it is the goals and objectives and perhaps implementation that are some of the things that we spend a lot of our time trying to rationalize and, and work out. And some of them, you know, we found, oh, we've done that. We've crossed it out. So you might still find something along those lines in there. But those are really some of the things that, you know, as a council that's creating ordinances and directions for, for the city, that's kind of the things that are kind of more important.
With the report, I see it as having a two-fold purpose. And I think what I read, and I apologize, I read this very quickly yesterday because.
You had to stay with it.
Busy this past weekend, so I'll read it again. The goals and objectives seem to be the best part of the report, which I'm glad to say that. One of the things that I think, the other part though, that I think is important is what you're talking about, the history. But this really is a record of where we've been and where we're going. And so when we're, when we're crafting goals and objectives, we can see how, how well we have done with our goals in the past. So I would suggest that maybe you use the, our, our staff better to go through and actually make sure that we have the key accomplishments that we have achieved. I'm just thinking of the last four years, which I know intimately, you know, to make sure that they are recorded in here so that going forward, we'll better, be better able, I think, to plan for the community.
And, you know, you've, I know I've got a clean copy of the report recently. Maybe a month or so ago, you might have been copied one of the update reports with the redactions. And that's kind of helpful in the process of seeing how things have evolved over time.
Yeah.
We do that with ordinances quite commonly. And unfortunately, when you write an ordinance, you don't often have the opportunity to write the backstory. This is where you could apply the backstory. And so it's a good point that you make, you know, those accomplishes, because these things can often be, you know, negatively impact. You only talk about things that we can improve and we don't really talk about the things we've achieved.
Well, and that we have improved, I mean, with drainage, making sure that we show, you know, the extent of the drainage work that has been done in the last five years. The, where we are with the police and fire departments, let them do it for you. I think it's asking a lot for you guys to have to go out and collect that yourselves on the committee. But it would be easy for them because they, they have to give it to us every month.
So Douglas, how do you want to receive? Because all we have right now is a PDF, right, of the document?
Yeah, I could send it in Word. And, and I'll send the red line as well, if that's, if that's helpful. And you can see kind of what's new, what's old.
Where it came.
Yeah, and any, just send it to me and, you know, we get it. The commissioners did the same thing. They would just send it in sometimes and actual edit. Sometimes it would just be kind of a high-level suggestion of add this initiative, that initiative. So I'll send that, I'll send it all out in Word and just let you all decide individually how you, how easiest, how it'd be easiest to send us recommendations, suggestions, changes. Scott, to your, to your earlier question about focus points, I will say, and just, and you'll see this probably more in the red line, the resilience element, that's brand new. So, you know, the, every other element really started from a boilerplate that was already in the, adopted. So I would say that, you know, that one should, this, this will be the first of that element. So pay. be the first of that element, so pay special attention there. And I, and I do think the planning commission really did spend a lot of time on transportation to the point of, you know, we hired a third party, we hired Stan Tech to collect data, provide them with just kind of ideas. That'll be in the final, that their work product will be in the plan as an appendix. So I would say those two elements specifically got, got a lot of attention. The priority investment element also kind of took on a new life with, it, it had, it had always been kind of the housekeeping place for grant opportunities. Prior to this plan, there had not been a ton of grant opportunities. So, so those, that was another kind of key focus was the grants identified and the projects identified and the priority investment element.
Would you please provide us those instructions when you send them?
Yeah, when I send it out. And they're the last three. So the back half of the plan.
Douglas, you can flip that to us this week, and let's just shoot for the 10th, July 10th, to have comments back.
Send them all to you on the 4th of July.
I'll be away.
The date.
That's right.
So they could spend a week.
So, so everybody with the planning commission's here, I don't know if, if, if Ron, if Ron left anything at him or blame him. I don't know if, any other comments, Suzanne, are you saying you, anything sandy speak? You, you don't need to really just project into this.
Scott, good question. I think the traffic, the parking, beach erosion zoning and sewer, they're all addressed, but if you'll pay attention and you see something in there that perhaps we're missing, we did elaborate extensively on a lot of those, but those are some of the, the hotspots right now in terms of issues with the community.
Thank you.
I will add the
Into the microphone, Suzanne.
Or just go up here.
Mine's closer.
Well, Scott, I will add.
There you go.
The priority investment, there's, it's not tied to a project, but there are the grant opportunities listed, so it's
On those two.
Right.
All right.
Tim or Dr. Rubin, anything else? Thank you all. I know this is, this plus the other spreadsheet is a huge amount of work, so a lot we all have to tackle, to Laura's point earlier, coming out of different plans. Thank you guys very much.
See you tomorrow.
You are. Run like the wind. Douglas, if you don't mind, just keep rocking through the dashboard and such.
You have in your packet our dashboard of city operations and the short-term rental report. Unfortunately, you will notice on the personnel vacancies, City Hall is the, is the big leader now. We have, we have, coming up on, we have four current, but we're about to have five vacancies. Working to get those filled, but they're proving to be challenges. Police Department, they have two vacancies, Fire has two vacancies, a paramedic and a firefighter.
What was his man gone yet, or is he?
Yeah, yesterday was his first day.
How's that replacement going? I know that's a critical one.
We have not had a ton of interest in that. We've had, we've only had, I think, a, a total of one prior to this week interested in that, in that role. And that, we get, we did actually get another one yesterday, I believe.
So not good.
So not good, unfortunately. Yeah, that's a, that's a, it's a critical one, and, and I will say also, you know, building official, that's one that, you know, the community relies on, and it's got to be there and consistent on time. So that's, and that's coming up, and we're having almost no, almost no interest in that one. So, a little anxious about those, but we'll, we'll, we'll get through it. Also in your packet were the short-term rental reports, and we, we added in the, in this packet, similarly to what we did last June, a, a distribution by gross revenue, which is what we, we have kind of thought is probably the, one of the better indicators of, of truly kind of active rentals. So, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of interesting shifting that we think we can explain, that there was a, there was a higher number last year of the very low grossing 0 to 25,000 licenses, which we attribute to people who went out and got a short-term rental license, even though they didn't intend to do that.
So, Doug, the 0 to 25,000, that, that's all inclusive, so that could be somebody that doesn't rent all of their rents once
That's correct.
One week.
Yeah, could be.
A year.
That's correct.
Yeah, a lot of them look like they're six, the six, six percenters. Well, 40, 4% or 50, 52 of them are
Yeah, are owner occupied.
Could be people who are here most of the year, rent or few.
If you go above the 25, it looked kind of flat. I just kind of ran some comparisons. So we had, on all the rentals, anything above 25,000, we had 1,511 last year, and we have 1,534 this year, so an increase of only 23. And then if you look at just the 6%, we had 1,433 above 25 last year, and we've got 1,463, so just, we had a 30 increase. Looks like some, there was some migration up the, up the revenue per, per unit, just a little bit.
Then the total number seems to be stabilized, total number of short-term rental licenses.
Any, any questions about dashboard, short-term rental reports, or departmental reports? Those were in your packets.
Yeah, Douglas, there were, there were some reports from the police department, such as livability. I don't think we received that yet.
Yeah, they said they were going to send them out. I didn't get them.
We don't have a police report at all.
Okay, all right.
If we could get, if we could get that sent out, though, whenever it's available.
Yeah, that'd be good. Yeah, Chief, Chief is not here, but he's, he's on vacation, but we will send those soon as we have.
Okay, thank you.
Douglas? Oh, on yours? Okay, yeah.
So we'll move into financial review, Deborah. Almost another fiscal year wrapping.
Thank you. I know that we are pressed for time, but there are some things that I want to point out because it takes some time to finalize June's numbers. So, starting with the first page of the cover sheet, overall, total revenue is 91% of the budget. Our general fund, we're outperforming in some areas of the budget, including property taxes, business licenses, rental licenses, building permits, and court revenue. There are some timing differences in our local option sales tax, and as of May, we collected 67% of the budget amount. We are expecting four more months of that for this fiscal year, and in April, distribution, which is typically, we receive in May, was not received until June. In other licenses, there are some timing delays there, and then we will be underperforming in parking revenue due to the reduced city share from 76% to 66%. And then there are some timing differences there as well.
Yeah, Deborah, most of the other, other licenses is all after June 30 receipt.
That's right. Yes, sir. As far as the other funds, we are still missing about two months of tourism tax or quarterly distributions, along with one month of interest. And then we are missing some grant revenue for 210 Forest Trails, the 210 Forest Trails project. And then we have one more month of, of interest, I'm sorry, one more month of, of, of lease income for the Marina. As far as expenses, the general fund is pretty much performing within budget and on track, with the exception of BSOs. For our capital project fund, we, of course, moved the Marina public dock to the capital fund, which was not budgeted there, as well as the full cost of the playground. However, that cost will be offset by the opera funds, our professional fees for the 210 Forest Trail will also be offset by the, a grant for that. Drainage costs in the capital funds are, are over budget. We are coming in at 391 versus a budget of 250,000. In hospitality, the hospitality fund, we are over, we're not over, however, Public Works is over, that department is over due to the contract for the solid, the waste and recycling, which we talked about earlier this year. Beach preservation is over due to the cost of placing sand on the beach, but some of that cost has been offset by a grant. And then there was some capital outlay that we are, we're over. We have spent 871,000 versus a budget of $765,000. Some of that cost was funded by grants for the ADA boardwalk and the Green Belt Project. The disaster recovery fund is over by $25,000, and that was due to the, some storm preparation and cleanup costs that was not anticipated. For page two of the cover sheet, I just want to point out that we have $50 million in cash and investments. The interest rate is 4.49 and is continuing to decrease. The current fund balance is $47 million, and just for the record, because I know this is always asked, and I, I sent you a sheet last month with some detail, but for the public that's listening, the difference between the cash balance of 50.8 million dollars and the fund balance for 531 of 47.5 is $3.3 million, and that difference is the net assets and liabilities, which is not reflected in cash. This is money the city is expecting to receive and money the city gives or has set aside for future use, such as deferred grant revenue or accounts payables. For our cash needs, this is just a reflection of the city's projected cash and fund balance as of 531. It assumes major cash, I'm sorry, capital expenditures, and of course, it does not consider any revenue in this assumptions. And it's just a overview, kind of a high-level overview of where the city anticipates. We, I'm going to kind of reformat this for our next fiscal budget so it, it can give us a better picture of where we, where we stand. For our tourism schedules, municipal association, I'm sorry, municipal accommodation fee, we did collect $57,563,000. We are 9% ahead of where we were last year. The state accommodations tax, we did collect 255,000, and that puts us 12% of head, ahead of where we were prior year. For our Charleston County pass-through, we received 87,294,000, which puts us 13% of head of FY '24. And hospitality, 137,467, and we're kind of flat where we were prior to last year. Not sure what's happening there, why that, that one's down. As far as beach, beach is the same as Muni A, and that's $57,563, which is 9%, 9% same as Muni. Like I stated earlier, the local option tax, we're missing four months of that. You have the project worksheets. If you have any questions, just please give me a shout, or if you have any questions now, we can discuss any, any you may have. I'll be happy to answer.
There's just one comment I have, and that is, it looks like fiscal year 2024 revenues were, were down generally. And so comparing 25 to 24 may give us a slightly rosier picture than there is compared to 2023. You see what I'm talking about?
In 2023? Say that again.
23 is our high watermark, for sure.
2023 is, is our high watermark, but it's increases, and then there's a decrease in 2024, and then an increase again in 2025.
Are you looking at tourism? What, what are you?
Any of the numbers, they all seem to, to have a trend like that, where you get the 2023 is a high, is a higher number. There's a decrease in 2024 and an increase again in 2025 for revenues. Any of the municipal accommodation fees?
Tourism fees, okay.
Is there a question, or what's up?
I'm just wondering, comparing it to last year, are we getting a rosier picture than, than is actually happening, or is it just trending the same as two years before?
I honestly don't know what happened in 2024, why the numbers were less than 2020, or not as good as 2023 in some cases. I don't have, I don't have an answer to that. I, I can only assume that people just were visiting the island. I don't have, I don't have an exact answer.
I think we've, I think we've seen that year as an anomaly, as a bounce back from COVID.
People started traveling more.
Yeah, so they're going overseas rather than staying.
And now they're more, now they're just kind of back to
Normalcy.
More normal.
Thank you, Deborah. Douglas, you can keep rocking if you want.
Yep.
Procurement and capital projects. Procurement is really just in your packet for your information, and we will be asking it at the council meeting for approval of a project that involves rearranging the office spaces upstairs and across the hall. There's a, there is a need for two additional office spaces, and this work would make that, make that happen. We have two bids now. Two bids are from, one is from beach construction, roughly 16,000 or 17,000. The other one is from Trinity Construction, I'm, I'm sorry, Trident Construction, in the neighborhood of 25,000. We think that Beach would do a fine job, so that, we're, we're hopeful to get a third before your consideration, but we may just have those two. But any questions about that? That's kind of just putting up walls and, and partitioning off the upstairs conference room. Moving on to the capital projects update, the majority of this work here in the last month has been on the, on the multi-use path and really the flood barrier that's associated with the golf course. We have made great progress on getting agreements in, in hand. We're down, we, we now are down to two, and we, we are working to get those two in hand that would allow us to move forward with that project. The, the next challenge, if and when we get those two, is, you know, and we've talked about the, the window of opportunity is very quickly shrinking. We are trying, and we have had an initial set of meetings with the contractor that's on site now. That is now looking more positive than we, we originally thought. It would be easiest, simplest, and quickest to be able to use that company. It's Heritage, and that's the company that City Council has authorized us to work with. If we find out that we just can't, which we, we may still find that out, we will, that will get us back into a, a cycle of getting bids, familiarizing new contractors with the work, which will take time and effort, and, and all this while the window of opportunity is closing. So we are very hopeful that we can still get it done with the original contractor, but if not, we're working on contingent, contingency plans with other contractors that we have familiarity with and we think can, can do the work quickly. So So we're still optimistic, but a lot of, you know, we're kind of halfway up the mountain, uh, hopeful that we will be able to get that, get that work done.
So Douglas, you're down to two out of the 21. I mean, are they full-time residents or do you remember off stop?
One is, one is not. Yeah, um, and, and we, we, we still feel positive. We're so, and, and one of the two just has a lot of questions. It took us a lot of, took us a very long time. It was the last owner that we could identify. So this project's hitting them right out of the cold. Uh, never, never heard of it. So they heard about it for the first time, I think, early last week. So they're just getting, you know, we're meeting on site, showing them exactly what we think it'll take in their area and just getting them, you know, getting the answers that they need in order to get them comfortable. So we're still hopeful we'll get there.
Well, it's incredible effort on your part to get 19 out of 21 at this point in pretty short order.
Fingers crossed, thank you.
Well, Dunes agreed to the contract language, uh, the clarification in there or not?
They did not. No, no, they, they, um, they left and, and, and it may still benefit us that there was, that language does have some flexibility in it, but it would allow, it would allow us to do the project by paying the resort and having the resort pay their contractor through a change order, which we may still need to do. So, so we felt, they felt like it was important to leave it the way it was. Uh, I think so far, everybody has gotten comfortable with that, yeah. Uh, the other projects, I'll just go through pretty quickly. Um, 38th and 41st, that project is, uh, we are, we are trying to secure permits for that. We're having a little bit of a back and forth with the DOT. So if you'll recall, this is putting new pipes on Palm Boulevard between 38th and 41st. DOT is wanting for us to, um, take over the maintenance forever and ever of that section of the drainage system. From our perspective, this is kind of the city's gift to them. It's, it is to drain their road in their event of a, of a storm. So we don't think it's, uh, we don't think it is prudent for us to have to maintain it forever and ever. We think it should be folded into their maintenance system. So we're, we're trying to work through that. It's also, as you'll recall, being paid for with state money. So technically it is in there, it's in there right of way, and it's actually being paid with state money. So I think by every account.
Can you explain their logic? It's, it's on this. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of baffled as to why they, if we're doing, yeah.
They, they do make the case that, um, we are, we're asking for a standard that is higher than their standard, than their, than the, what is necessary to drain that 20-foot section of asphalt. And they're just saying, you know, we're, we're happy for you all to do it, but it, this is above and beyond what we have as our standard. And because it's above and beyond, we expect for you to maintain it.
So their standard is flooding.
Their standard is no, no drainage whatsoever.
Public highway.
So one, one left hand granted us the money to do this from the state.
Everybody says it's a rust.
That has the, I mean, can we, do we need some help to reconcile this?
I don't think so.
Makes no sense.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think it, I mean, I, it has been escalated up to, um, above the, the regional permitting office. Um, I think, I, I think we're going to be okay. They did not know that it was being paid for with state funds prior to, so, which, which they wouldn't. I mean, the people issuing the permits don't know the source of money to do the project, so.
Maybe we could suggest that they just finish the drainage project down the rest of the road the way it should be, and then they can maintain the whole thing.
You keep us surprised at the.
Yes, yeah, I'll, I will let you, I'll let you know. I, I hope that continues positively. Um, the, the Marina dredging project, that is still also out on, uh, we're, we're securing permits. That's, I think, still out on public notice. The public notice period may have closed for that. Uh, but that's ATM working through the permitting on that. The, um, County Park Emergency Vehicle Access Project is still kind of 99% done. They have some final landscaping to do and they have a, they have power to hook up. So they're, they're at the finish line, but they've kind of been at the finish line for four or five weeks now. But they're, this week, they should get that wrapped up. Uh, beach, beach restoration, you all just heard from Stephen. I think you're up to date on that. Um, there, there was, um, a meeting this month, um, about the 21st Avenue sidewalk repair and extension that the county has now, that work is under contract.
So you skipped over the Palm Boulevard.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, nothing for, uh, D1. No, no update there. Um, D2, um, that work is, uh, now under contract. We have a pre-construction meeting, uh, at some point this week on that work. So it, it is now progressing. Again, they're being, they're, they're assuring us it's not going to interfere with traffic in our busy, uh, season. Any updates or any questions on those updates?
Uh, yeah, Douglas, I think you accidentally skipped over the Allopon Marina Public Dock and Green Space.
Yeah, skip means there wasn't much.
Okay, so we still, the engineers met with public facilities, but we still don't have.
Yeah, and, and I will say.
With the tenants.
That's correct. And there, there has been an additional meeting, uh, Jan met with the, with, um, Klein, the engineer on that project. So we do still, we, we have, um, done some additional design work, but I, uh, it still kind of sits with getting the approval of the tenants. So not much of an update there, but we're still working on it.
Now Douglas, let you keep rocking and.
Yeah.
Livability.
Um, so this came out of the Public Safety Committee meeting, the, the A1 discussion of engaging a traffic engineer to document traffic on the Fourth of July. The, the thought, and, and there was a lot of discussion in that meeting, good, good discussion about what the pinch points were on Memorial Day weekend. Um, and, and there was a little bit, you know, there was kind of different ideas tossed around about, you know, what could have been done to potentially shrink, you know, there, there never would have been a quick exodus of the island, but we're hearing reports of two, two and a half hours. Could that have been 45 minutes, 50 minutes? It was some modifications to the, um, traffic flows. So the, the idea that was discussed in that committee was, um, you know, we have this addition, we have this big weekend coming up, Fourth of July. We probably are going to have a similar condition that afternoon. Could we take that opportunity and collect data to actually watch the patterns of traffic build to try to identify the pinch points and potential modifications that, that the city could, uh, work towards to try to help those pinch points? Uh, I have had, I've had a couple of conversations with StanTech, um, last week. They are, they believe that they can, uh, deploy drones. They've done this for us before with airplanes. Now the technology would allow them to do it with drones with the idea that, that we would identify the, the potential pinch points. They would, they would have a drone that would, that would really go up, capture a bunch of photos, uh, for a while, then come down and kind of do that throughout the, throughout the day to just watch the patterns build and then, uh, release. They thought it would be helpful. They are working to get us a price to do that. In order to be able to do that, obviously, we would, it's, it's an unbudgeted expense. It, it would need to happen, obviously, on the Fourth of July. So that kind of leaves us getting that proposal approved, uh, at your council meeting, if we can get it in time. So again, it's kind of a, it's kind of a tight schedule to get it done. If we wanted to get it done, um, the thought there in doing it now would be that if we don't do it on the Fourth of July, it will probably be a year before we have an opportunity to collect that data again.
Are these, what was noticed on Memorial Day, are these things separate from the things we've been talking about, like two lanes off the island, things like that? Are these, are these things that we have control over?
That's, that is, I think that's kind of.
I, I think we all know, you know, the problems that we have. And if, if, if we're just going to be told that you're an island and there's two ways on and off, and nobody wants to go off on Sullivan's on a holiday weekend. And it would be really nice if we had two lanes off, but we're not going to get that. I don't know what good a study does us.
If you go to 511 SC on any of these weekends.
You can watch it.
You can, you can watch it build up. There's a red, yellow, green mark, you know, lines on the roads. You could just see where it just builds up.
And it was consistently building on Memorial Day weekend, all through the afternoon, watching that same app.
Yeah.
It never got off of yellow until late in the afternoon. And then we had everybody reverse all at one time.
Then there's gridlock and it's, it stops. What we're trying to do is keep it, um, delay the time till gridlock. You're going to have gridlock on, on three weekends a year. We can do something at the Palm Boulevard 14th Avenue intersection. That's under our control and we can help the situation there. So I don't think it'll be too expensive for what we're asking. I would suggest that we probably look at July 4th as well as the 5th. Because the Saturday, that's a Saturday and it's probably could be busier.
Yeah, they, StanTech actually suggested that too, that maybe do the 6th instead. And, and you wouldn't have the anomaly of people waiting for the fireworks, which, which.
Yeah, well, that's one of the points that Chief Cornet made too, is that July 4th, with everything going on that's already planned with fireworks, with golf cart parade, which I guess we'd be talking about later, and just knowing what's coming on July the 4th. We have decent weather, they're all hands on deck for that day.
Yeah, and I.
Whereas on Memorial Day, they have limited staff.
Right. I agree for that. And if you looked on Memorial Day, you also noticed that the, um, causeway was not backed up. So what we're trying to do is just get our traffic stacked up on the causeway and let Mount Pleasant deal with it on their side, since they don't really, aren't cooperating with us now. Have them figure it out on their own, unless they want to talk about this.
I do think there was kind of consensus that the, the issue was, I think we historically felt like the rifle range road intersection was the problem. I think that there was consensus that this weekend, it was not the problem. And then it was, it, it had more to do on that weekend with, with what the chief called the zippering effect of the traffic trying to enter in from Waterway at 21st Curve and then each of the avenues into Palm. And that if there was something done or, you know, and obviously the staffing is, is a problem on the Fourth of July, obviously, we're, we're already at, at full staffing with doing other things. But ideas of could, could something have helped that zippering in with the idea that once you're actually on and starting up the connector, you are kind of more or less, uh, freer, freer flowing at that point?
Can, can we get officers at that intersection or change the light flow? Is that something, are there's things that we can do?
We could, we could if we had the manpower. And I think one of the questions was, could we, I don't know that our staff would have the ability to do that on those weekends, but the question was asked, could we hire traffic, you know, traffic controllers? Could we get, we don't think there's a, a lot of off-duty officers available, but could we pull resources in to help get the flow of traffic better getting off the island?
Chief told me after the meeting that they do train their BSOs to be functional in those kinds of positions. I think there's somebody else calling the shots, but that they could actually help. So it might actually just cost us a couple of extra BSOs.
So we, so again, we, we don't have even a proposal yet. I don't know that we'll have one in time for, for consideration. Just came up last week. So again, if the, if the planets align, there's nothing really to consider now, but you may have a proposal that you could consider at your council meeting to do this project of studying the exodus on probably be July 5th, with the idea that it would be gridlock again and we could potentially identify some pinch points.
And I just want to say one more thing is what we learned from this, this occasion can be used on any high-volume weekend to even better effect. Because when you hit grid, gridlock, you're pretty much, you know, dead in the water until you get it, to get, till you get it cleared out. It's like emptying a stadium or something like that. But if traffic continues to flow, you can move it, you can keep it moving without it. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not being clear, but it does work better if you figure out the pinch point and solve it. There's something we can do.
All right, Douglas.
Golf cart, yep. I would just say this is a, um, you, you will probably have been made aware that there was new golf cart regulations enacted, um, I guess, this month or, or last month. The Public Safety Committee is working through those, um, those new regulations. Most of it would not involve the council at all, but part of those regulations include city's ability to identify designated golf cart paths with, within the island. Uh, that was not previously, um, allowed by the statute. So we have some paths specifically between the 21st Avenue curve and 14th that are golf cart and they're not officially designated as such. So there, there may be a need for you all to consider if you want to, uh, make those official golf cart paths doing that. The other things are just changes that the police department will be incorporating into their, into their work. I don't, I know Chief is not here. Captain, anything to add to that or is that, does that cover it? Okay. So that'll be a work in progress.
One of the changes of the golf cart is any child under 12 has to have a seatbelt now for a golf cart. So you're going to have to, have to be conversion kits.
Yeah.
Need to be, you can buy conversion kits to add seatbelts to the, to the cart.
There's going to be a run on conversion kits itself.
I know Craig and T and City did a good job pushing out information. So thank y'all for doing that. And Chief O, I know y'all were honored as well. Thank you.
Well, those regulations are, were immediate and it was signed by the governor on May 22nd. And so I don't know if there's going to be a, a period where they won't enforce a 12-year-old seatbelt law or what, but it is effective immediately.
Yeah, I think generally they, they.
But there's some things that we need to look at too, like, um, operating carts at night. And then there's, there's still the four-mile rule from either gated community or the home of where the golf cart is. I think there's things we need to look at.
Yeah.
There's a lot more to it than just a 12-year-old seatbelt.
Right. That's right. Uh, next thing on the agenda, the discussion of, uh, palm tree planning proposal for the large municipal lot. This is, this will be, um, this will be on the environmental advisory committee for Thurs, this Thursday. And it's, it's just a work in progress that, um, I, I would expect that that would go from that committee and then also go through the public facilities committee, um, just for consideration. And that's kind of going to work its, work itself up to council.
Douglas, to that point, I mean, we're not looking to do anything this summer anyway with season, so when we have time to work it through all that.
And we, we met, uh, had a discussion today with the landscape architect, kind of working through just the nuts and bolts of how they would be irrigated, things like that. So, uh, we're just collecting information now about feasibility of it and, uh, work to be done, but we'll report back on that.
I'd just like to say, please, make sure they're not planted under power lines or anywhere near power lines. And secondly, um, you might want, um, the, our traffic engineer to make sure that it's not going to affect the layout of the parking lot wherever they're being planted.
Okay. Only other thing on the agenda, we have a resolution, um, in your packet to increase the building permit fees. This was part of, um, your budget that was approved last month included a, an increase in those fees. I will say that it has been, I, it's been a long time since the, um, permit fees themselves have been updated. Business license fees have been updated periodically. And I, I will just tell you that we, we did an exercise of looking, um, at all of the various permits. And I think council agreed to generically kind of 15% increase. And that is the percent increase that was applied to building permits specifically. The other subcontractor permits, it was brought to our attention that were, they were just so low that, that the city is, it's literally costing the city money in terms of, uh, manpower to do the electrical inspection. of manpower to do the electrical inspections, mechanical inspections permit, I'm sorry, plumbing inspections for what we were charging. So we tried to, so those increases are more than 15%. I don't think they're, they're onerous, but I think it gets it, gets it up to a cost that is equivalent to the service that the city's providing for those permits.
Have we done a benchmark on these?
Uh, we did, we do have that, yeah. We could provide that. We've, we've.
If you could send that.
Yeah, will do. Yeah, that kind of started this discussion in the, in the, in the budgeting process. We started with that benchmark, so I'll forward that.
So Douglas, we'd have this as an action item that.
That's correct. That'll be at your council meeting.
And you've got it all detailed, electrical, plumbing, mechanical.
Yeah.
Would that be comparable to what other municipalities are charging?
Yes.
That was the question. I was going to forward.
I'll forward you a, a detail of, an example of other communities. That's all I have, man.
Thank you, Douglas. There be no further business.
Motion to adjourn.